Good to have you, good to have you here. Before I call the meeting to order, I think we have some special guests here this morning from our Leadership Jackson class that they're all got in here on time. How about y'all standing up and let's, let's recognize y'all. Thank you. Future leaders of the city. Thank you all for being here. We'll call to order the October 3rd, 2017 meeting of the Jackson City Council and we'll ask Councilman Brooks to lead us in the invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. In honor and recognition of Lane College and the Lane College Homecoming Weekend, I've invited Dr. Moses Goldman, Executive Vice President and Chaplain of Lane College, to present our invocation this morning. We all know that Lane College is inextricably linked with the history of Jackson, Tennessee, an institution that has meant so much to so many, and an institution that is synonymous with the history of Jackson. Dr. Goldman.
Thank you, Councilman and Mayor. Let us pray. Our wise and our gracious God, we just thank you for the privilege of being able to invoke your presence in a meeting of our city leaders. We thank you for those who have assembled here today. We thank you for those who attend regularly and those who are visiting. We thank you for the wisdom and the unity and the heartfelt desire to see the city grow in a unified way and in a way that's best for all of our citizens. We pray now your blessings upon this meeting, upon the mayor as he leaves, and upon all of the council people as they share. We pray that you would give us wisdom and insight, help us to discuss the things that we need to discuss, to ask the hard questions, but to do it in a way that is civil and productive. We thank and praise you for hearing and answering all of these prayers in accord with your will for this city and this region. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Nia, roll call. I think everyone is present. It'll show council member Vicki Flit, absent, let's remember to continue to pray for Flit family. Her husband's in transitional care and awaiting some surgery, so if you all would just remember them, continue to remember them. Item four is approval of the minutes, September 5th, 2017, City Council meeting. Council members have received a copy of those minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes that are submitted. Item five is the invitation for public comment. Anyone here who wishes to be heard on any matter under new business, if you'll be sure and let me know at the time, either stand or hold your hand up, get my attention. If you would, we'd be happy to call on you and let you address the council. We had, we have two proclamations this morning, and let me ask, I think our first one's going to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Bridgette, why don't you come up from Rapp and I'll meet you at the headquarters. Okay, thank you all for being here this morning for the presentation of this proclamation. And let me read it and make it part of the record at this time. Whereas one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and whereas 15.5 million U.S. children live in families in which partner violence occurred at least once in the past year, and seven million children live in families in which severe partner violence occurred, and whereas almost one out of five murder victims in the United States were killed by intimate partners, women account for two out of three murder victims killed by intimate partners, and whereas the abuse of a family member can have long-term damaging effects on the survivor and her children, it impacts family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly to the women and children, and whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent social ail due to a historical imbalance of power and gender and age, and whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, is sustained by societal indifference, and whereas the survivors of domestic violence should help find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against persons and against the community, and whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, to address its brutal and destructive effects, and to make ending domestic violence a community priority. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work being done by our community to prevent domestic violence, support survivors of domestic violence, and hold perpetrators of such violence accountable for their crimes against the community, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to become aware of this destructive force in our society and become part of the efforts to stop violence in families. We certainly appreciate Rapp, appreciate them for many years and what they do to fight domestic violence. It's my honor to present this to you and ask you to step up and address the question.
Thank you, Mayor Gist and members of the City Council. Rapp provides services to men, women, and children who have experienced domestic violence or sexual assault in 19 counties in West Tennessee. Our mission is to build safe, stable, nurturing relationships, families, and communities. Our goal is to end violence, change lives, and give hope. We stand boldly against violence and invite each of you to join us in taking a stand to end violence in the world. At this time, I would like to introduce our Jackson team. We have Deborah Brackens, our intern Beatrice Okira, Valerie Conley, Dar Johnson Tuck, Mara White, Cindy Cotton, and Mamie Hutcherson. These ladies are the ones who provide services and support to our participants day in and day out. Rapp could not do such great work in the community without their dedication and compassion. So thank you, ladies, for all that you do. Before we take our seat, we would like to invite each of you to our candlelight vigil tonight at 5:30 at our Safe Hope Center location on 512 Roland Avenue. We will be honoring, remembering those who we have lost, celebrating those who have survived, and supporting those still struggling. Thank you.
Okay, tonight we party in this city, party big time. Let me ask Lieutenant Byron Taylor to come up here. Tonight is National Night Out. Accept this proclamation and tell us what all we're gonna be doing and what a good time we're gonna have. The proclamation, whereas the National Association of Panwatch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October the 3rd, 2017, entitled National Night Out, and whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in Jackson to join over 38 million people in 16,000 communities from all 50 states, Canada, and military bases worldwide, and whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods a safer place to live, and whereas neighbors in the City of Jackson assist the Jackson Police Department through joint community efforts and support National Night Out 2017 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens in the City of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jackson. Now therefore, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, as National Night Out and urge all citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event. Byron, thank you for being here to accept this and turn it over to me.
I just want to thank the mayor, the chief, for allowing us to participate in this program. We have 22 parties citywide. I would encourage all city employees and civilians to go out and attend the parties because the 22 groups that took the time to form the parties, we need to, we need to show support to them also too. So I just encourage you to go out and attend and have fun. Thank you.
Item seven is we have one recognition this morning, a presentation by Allen S. Lee, Chris Boomer, owners of Hollywood Liquor. You guys will come on up and address the council.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak in front of you.
Y'all sit down. Introduce yourself, guy.
I'm Allen S. Lee. Here, I was the owner of Hollywood Liquors.
Chris Boomer, manager of Hollywood Liquors.
I'm here to come before the City Council to talk about the current liquor zones that we have here in the City of Jackson. We last talked about this in August of 2012. It was brought before the City Council. At that time, we left it up to the liquor stores to decide amongst themselves if we wanted to change the current zoning ordinances that we have here. At that time, seven of the liquor stores signed that document, the other five did not. Since then, we've had a lot of turnover in the ownerships of the local liquor stores. And in my case, we've had a lot of issues as far as commercial, residential, really fallen off in my zone. My store is on Hollywood, and that area is suffering for customers. We came before you guys in 2012 to have you guys maybe look at the lines or the zones, and I'd like to try to get that back on the agenda somehow. You know, since then, we've had wine. When I bought my liquor store, I bought a wine and liquor license from the City of Jackson or the State of Tennessee, excuse me. Since then, the state has changed the law and has allowed wine to go into the grocery stores, to Walmart, and to other big box stores, which has hurt the liquor store business here in town. Also, since then, liquor's been passed in Myland, Henderson, Dyersburg, not Dyersburg, excuse me, Brownsville, and several other surrounding cities, which has also pulled customer base from the City of Jackson. At one time, we picked up some of that business off of Hollywood, but since those surrounding towns have added liquor stores to their cities, it's hurt my business more. Over the last four years, haven't turned a profit, and we're the only industry that I know of, retail business that I know of in Jackson, that is limited to where we can go. I'm a businessman and have other businesses, but I could put that business anywhere I want to. And for me not to be able to move my liquor store, I have an issue with that. You know, no one tells any restaurant or any beer store where they can put their restaurant or where they can put their convenience store. They build them where they want to, and it's, you know, free market. You know, whoever survives, survives. If the other ones don't survive, they go out of business. And I think that that should be the same way, or the liquor stores should be treated the same way as any other retail business in the City of Jackson. I don't know where we go from here, but I want to present my case. You know, financially, we're not going to make it much longer. I like the opportunity to recoup my losses, but in order to recoup my losses, I gotta have the opportunity to move the store. I can't recoup my losses in my current location. Outside of that, I just appreciate the time to speak in front of you guys to plead my case, and I would ask it, maybe you take it under advisement. I've reached out a couple times to a couple people on the council. It's a difficult situation, it's a difficult topic, I understand, but again, we're talking about a retail business that I'm limited to where I can move it. And I like, I don't know what the next step would be.
Okay, any, any comments from council or?
Mayor, if I could, can I make a motion to put a committee together to take a look at the rezoning, to seeking the last, be redrawn, seeing the last time we did, do the drawing and take a look at it.
You know, and I've looked, I've looked at several cities in the surrounding area, and all the new liquor licenses in every city, there's no zones. I looked at cities that are same size, there's no zones. These zones were put into place in 1971 when we originally got package stores here in Jackson, Tennessee. Things have changed a lot since then. You know, retail business, residents, all moved out north. You know, one time Hollywood was a bustling area. It's not a bustling area anymore, but at one time it was. So I just appreciate you taking a look at that.
Okay, we have a motion to establish a committee consisting of council members. Any, any suggestion as to how many council members, committee, three, five?
I think five.
I think five, okay. Is that, will make that part of your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to put a committee of five together from the City Council to take a look at the zoning and just look at, see when the last time the order was wrote, like you said, and see, can we take a look at it, rewrite that also.
Okay, council, we have a motion to establish a five-member council committee to look at and investigate the possibility, do the research of what other cities are doing, and the chair will accept a second.
Second.
We have a second.
Mayor, if I may, if we could, I think it would be helpful and appropriate to have someone from the liquor industry or one of the liquor owners.
I would be happy to help.
To be a part of that as well. I think that information would be very pertinent to that committee.
Okay, is that, that one individual is to be a part of the committee? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Okay, let's, let's stay away from the, is that a voting member or ex officio? We need an odd number if we, we have voting.
I'd say an ex officio member.
Okay, all right, one member from the, from the, those have community, retail community to serve on that committee along with five council people. I encourage the council, if you would love to serve on this committee, be sure and let the mayor know, and I will most certainly have you as a member of that committee.
I would, as the ex officio member, my concern, Councilman Brooks, is that we get, I don't know the, the way the liquor store owners feel. I feel we get one that feels a certain way, adds a certain amount of information one way or the other. We can have the other, the liquor store owners come and present to that committee and not have one on the committee, one on the committee may be better. I just would have that discussion to see if that would be, go to serve instead of having just one on the committee.
Yeah, Ernest, I would agree with Scott, I think there, that I think we make the, the meetings open and where the liquor store owners can participate in the meeting and express their opinion, but, but I kind of agree if we, you know, we're gonna pick one that wants to move and one that doesn't want to move to be on the committee, that's gonna be difficult.
I think the committee will be able to call the, the owners in for just an informational session with each of them. If you'd like to be at the committee, how you, how you organize your, your format, but right now, we have a motion and a second to put together a committee of five council members to study this issue. We have a motion, a second, and additional discussion. If not, council, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks. Okay, item eight is first readings, consideration and ordinance to annex, resolution to adopt the plan of service. An ordinance to zone an area referred to as McAlexander Family Partners, generally located along the 650 block of Ashport Road comprising a total of 71.52 acres, more or less. The proposed zoning for this annexation area is RES F8, single-family residential flood hazard district. Mr. Powell.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
It's been a little while since we've had an annexation. A lot has changed since we went and pursued annexation in the northwest part of the county. The legislation has changed at the state level. The city cannot annex by its own initiative anymore. The only way we can annex is by request or referendum, and this is requested annexation. The property owner developer is asking to have this property annexed. It is adjacent to the city limits, and a part of that annexation is, is, is threefold. It's an ordinance to annex, a resolution to adopt a plan of service, and also an ordinance to zone. You have those materials pertinent to that annexation, and I'd be happy to answer any question. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this to you.
Any questions from council for standing on this ordinance?
No questions. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wood. Mr. Powell, good morning.
Good morning.
Now, the legislation has changed in the rules. There's gotta be friendly annexation and requests now, right?
Yes, sir.
And the Alexander Corporation has requested this.
Yes, sir.
For residential use.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Before we vote, this is an ordinance on first reading, so we'll necessitate a public hearing, so I'll open that public hearing now and ask if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on this matter, whether it be in support of or in opposition to. If you'll let it be known, I'll be happy to call, call on you. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's no additional discussion, council, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item two, under first readings, consideration and ordinance to rezone property located at 3131 North Highland Avenue from OC Office Residential District to RG2 General Residential containing 1.7 acres, more or less submitted by Brookdale Senior Living.
Again, you have the materials pertinent to this rezoning, the request. The Planning Commission heard this, their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of it to you. This is a portion of land that will be added to the campus of what used to be Jackson Oaks is now Brookdale. This property is currently zoned office. It was a zoning that was in place some years ago when that area developed kind of office-related, but since then, Brookdale has bought this property and wishes to add it to their campus. They are wanting to establish a memory loss clinic at that location, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning to you.
Move for approval.
So we have a motion and a second for approval. Again, this is an ordinance on first reading. Please, if you will, necessitate a public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone present who wishes to be heard on this matter in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If you would let me know, I'll be happy to call on you. Ms. M, come on up. If you would, be kind enough to come up and introduce yourself to the council. Uh huh, it'd be fine.
Hi, my name is Elsa Lunsford. I live directly south of the location, and I just want to make a request that the water issues that we have obtained from the senior living center be taken care of. When it was first built, it was supposed to have put in a fence all the way across Talquah on the back. That was never done, and...
Did you say, did you say a fence?
Yes, a privacy fence. I'm sorry. And I just want to make sure that whatever happens back there, that the water issue gets taken care of because our house always gets a lot of water from both sides.
Okay. Stan, is that part of the?
It is part of the review. We will look at the drainage issues associated with that site. We will review that and review the drainage plan, also the grading plan, as we review the site plan.
Okay. Did, did we get your name? I, I didn't, I may have just...
Elsa Lunsford.
Okay, all right, for the record, thank you so much. Okay, um, let's see, we've had the public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and additional discussion by council.
Yeah, if I could, on the fencing issues you mentioned, I notice a lot of times we have some commercials that they say they could put a fence or a berm or something there, and another happens or falls apart. Can we look back on the original and find out if there was supposed to have been a fence and there's not one?
We will research that, and if there were a requirement that a fence be placed in there, we will contact Brookdale and ask them to do so. If it's not a requirement, we will talk to Brookdale about putting one in place.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Stan. Item three is consideration and ordinance to rezone property located at 1716 South Highland Avenue from B5 Highway Business District SC1 Plan Unit Commercial Development District containing 1.3 acres, more or less submitted by Chadwick Bond.
Just to orient you, this, this property is located just south of the McDonald's on South Highland and kind of wraps around the back of that, and currently, the property is zoned SC1, a part of it is, and part of it's not zoned SC1, and the owner would just like to consolidate his zoning under one scheme, so when we go through the process, he'll be dealing with setbacks that match and those things. So Planning Commission heard this at their last meeting, they are recommending approval of it to you.
Okay, any questions of council? Stand.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion for approval, second, again, an ordinance on first reading. I'll open the public hearing, see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to pass of this ordinance. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes with seven members in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you, Nia. Item four is consideration and ordinance to close and abandon Dale Jamison Senior Drive, located between South Shannon Street and South Liberty Street, submitted by Madison County.
Again, this item was presented at the Planning Commission, they are recommending it to you. You have the materials pertinent to the request. It is a request by Madison County, so it's, it's not our request, but, but we are, we recommend, and I, the need for it. They, they are wanting to expand the jail on the property that you see on the map north of them, and they want to basically abandon the street so they can consolidate the properties together.
Some council will remember Dale Jamison County Commissioner at the time headed the committee to build the jail. The jail got built, they named a street after him, now it's gone into the abyss.
Not all. Yeah, we're not abandoning the entire street, just a large portion of it.
The, the short section that comes off of South Highland is still gonna be carrying the name, but the rest of it that you see highlighted on the map will be abandoned.
Okay.
Does, do we just need to say a portion of Dale Jamison? Because this says we're gonna close and abandon Dale Jamison Senior Drive.
Yeah. Again, the, the ordinance will dictate the, the bounds of that, but, but again, you can clarify anything you would like.
On, on the map up here, it says a portion.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Powell, the objective, you say is the county wanna do what?
Expand the jail.
Okay, close a portion of the street.
Yes, 'cause if you see, the property north of them was property once owned by the Jackson Housing Authority. It was where Mary Lane Courts was located. Once it was destroyed by the storm, the Jackson Housing Authority has kept ownership of it until recently, the, the county has optioned that property, and again, they may have purchased it by now, I'm not sure, but they would like to use that property to expand the jail, and so they need to abandon the street so they can consolidate the property into one piece.
They'd be expanding north?
Yes.
And you said that you're not sure whether or not they own, own that property?
Uh, they, at one time, they had an option. I'm not sure if they, if they fully have possession of the property now or not.
I assume they've exercised it, if they, they want to close.
I would think so. I just, I'm not sure.
Is that expand or bill a jail?
Um, again, everything I've heard them has been to expand, but, but again, it has to do with a jail facility.
Okay, any, any additional questions from council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
And we have a second. Before we vote, again, this is an ordinance on first reading, we'll have a public hearing. Ask if there's anyone present who'd like to speak on this matter in support of or in opposition to, if you'd let me know. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
The motion passes with five in favor, three against.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item nine, second readings, consideration and ordinance to rezone property located along Item nine, second readings, uh, consideration and ordinance to rezone property located along the fifty block of Wallwell Road, from A O F H Agriculture Open Land Flood Hazard District to R G two F eight, General Residential Flood Hazard District, containing five point one-four acres, more or less submitted by Terry Drumright of T L M on behalf of Gail Augustus. This is an ordinance on second reading, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, first, I'd just like to say, I've been on this council a good while, and, uh, this has been one of the toughest issues that I've personally dealt with. Uh, there's a lot of emotion in it, and I'm on both sides, and, and I see both sides. I have nothing against the Dream Center, as a matter of fact, if they'd accept it, I'm getting ready, my mother passed away a couple of years, and I'm getting ready to do away with some furniture, and I, I'll be more than happy to give it to them. Uh, but we've had a problem as far as the Bill Trace folks concerned with flooding, and, uh, they have, uh, had a engineer from Memphis to do a study, which from what I can find out, there's never really been a study, uh, I guess, except what, uh, uh, Brother Carter did when they built the church over there. And, uh, of course, naturally, the lot's in a flood zone. Now, the part about the, uh, uh, survey that the engineer did, the road that they have to build back toward the, uh, development is gonna have to be raised above the flood plain. Now, to do this, they're gonna have to raise this road, from my understanding, five to seven feet, and that'll be next to, uh, Mose Creek. So, it appears like that that's gonna put a dam there to dam the water, and that throws the water back toward, uh, Mose Creek, and Mose Creek sits on the edge of, uh, Bill Trace. So if we approve this, uh, motion here and this issue, and the Bill Trace folks are, uh, flooded one day, then, in my opinion, and I've heard from different attorneys, that the council becomes liable for it. And I would ask that, uh, you not approve this issue for the safety of the people of Bill Trace.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other, any other questions are coming?
We had a response from, from Stan on some of those issues, could he address the council on those issues?
I think if we...
Do you have a motion to do that?
On second readings, ordinance on second readings, obviously, we've gone through two public hearings, and I think to call anyone up from one side, we need to call someone up the other. So, I think council did receive a copy of, of, of that study.
Everybody received it, yes, sir.
And had a chance to evaluate it and, and make the decision on, uh, on what was, uh, what was submitted, and, and I think the city attorney and the planning department submitted a response to that, so I think y'all have all of that. Um, so I'll ask that, that, you know, ask if there's any additional questions from council on passage of this ordinance on second reading.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and a second for approval.
Second.
Any, any additional questions? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with five in favor and three against.
Okay, thank you. Item ten, new business. Uh, request for approval, refinancing of revenue bonds by West Tennessee Healthcare, uh, presented by Jeff Blankenship, V O, and I think we have a stand-in for Jeff this morning, and that would be Mr. Will Bell, attorney for West Tennessee Healthcare.
Good morning, Council. My name is Will Bell, I'm outside to the legal counsel for Jackson General Hospital. The request today is to approve a refunding of about seventy-five million dollars of hospital bonds that were originally issued in two thousand and eight. There's no new money, no new bonds, it's a refunding that will save the district about a million dollars a year in interest. The refunding would be done in the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, there was a copy of the resolution that I provided to city council that I assume is in your packet. There's also a copy of a letter to clarify the point that this is not a general obligation of the city, city taxpayers are not on the line, the hospital's property is not even mortgaged, the only security and the only source of repayment is the hospital revenue. This is similar to what the hospital's done in my involvement in two thousand and six, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and fifteen. So, uh, and also, as I think I mentioned, there's a letter from bond council in Chicago pointing out that this is not a general obligation bond, there's no obligation on the city taxpayers, and it's secured only by the revenues of Jackson General Hospital. There is a specific resolution, and that's what we're asking the board to pass, that has to be done, provide to bond council and to the underwriters Goldman Sachs to be able to make the bonds marketable, it's tax-free municipal bonds.
Motion to approve.
Hey, well, that saves us about a million dollars, won't it?
Yes, sir, it saved the hospital about a million dollars in interest per year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion from council? We are, that we are moving to approve the resolution that, uh, council has as far as this, uh, refunding. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Council, please.
Mayor, I just had an additional question, if I may. Will you be going to the county commission as well for approval of this resolution?
Yes, sir, there's a requirement for the county commission to approve that. They will not be issuing the bonds, but the county commission is one of the co-owners of the hospital district, as is the city, and in fact, there's a finance committee meeting this morning, that's where Mr. Blankenship is, who came to the agenda review. It will go before the county commission on, uh, October sixteenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
The only reason this problem before us is because we're co-owners of the property?
Well, you're, you're, the city's co-owners of the property, and the city will also be issuing the bonds. They're limited obligation bonds, secured only by the revenue of the hospital. So that's what, that's what makes them a municipal bond, and that they can be tax-free to owners and, and get that lower interest rate for the hospital.
It doesn't cost the city anything.
No, sir, that's correct.
The county's involvement is simply because they're a partner in ownership of the...
Yes, sir.
Okay, any additional questions by council? If not, we have a, do we have a second, a per, motion and a second? Any additional discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one abstaining.
No, I didn't abstain.
Yeah.
He was, he was just slow on the trigger.
We had a correction, we had a correction down there, to me. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, if council has no objection under item two of new business, we need a little bit more time to establish the charter review committee. Uh, the charter does not address how many members, but I think we had a resolution passed in fourteen B C that we appoint a, a representative of each council district, uh, to this charter review committee, so we have several that's already obligated and indicated they would like to do it. I'll be checking with the council to see whom you would want to suggest representing your district. We'll have it formulated, the names will be before you, and the resumes will be before you at the next meeting. So if there's no objection, we'll just bypass that and move ahead.
Yeah, also, Mr. Chairman, it would give us an odd number.
It would, yeah, it would. Uh, board appointments, item three, um, city tree board, Kevin Andrews, reappointment, Trey Watson.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
On the Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, Tammy Buchanan, Pat Hamlet, and Doris Morris.
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote passes unanimously.
And it's Ned McQuarrie of West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center Board, uh, the reappointment of Jerry Woods.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And under the housing board of adjustment appeals, we have Frankie Hayes being reappointed to that board.
So moved, second.
Motion, second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, budget amendments, Miss Bell.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Paula.
We have three this morning that we need to review for approval. The first one that you have before you is capital for state street maintenance in the amount of ten thousand dollars, Jackson Ballpark in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The street department is requesting it for the purchase of a gator to use on the bypass mowing, and the Jackson Ballpark is for a new roof, and this will be a draw on the capital fund balance in the amount of forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Al, we had a question on the roofing at the ballpark. Uh, I assume if we need to re-roof it, that we have leaks out there.
Yes, and, uh, we have Louis Kreider here from the Ballpark, he's in charge of maintenance.
Louis, you mind just sharing with the council the, have we put, is that the second or third roof on that building?
I believe it's the first roof.
First one, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
What we've looked at in the past is that the, it's in the clubhouse, it's not the actual stadium itself. The clubhouse roof has never been completely replaced, um, it's been spot, you know, like spot decking, and we've replaced some shingles, but I don't think the thing has ever been replaced since it's been built. It does need to be completely replaced decking and all, but they also need to install some soffit vents so that it helps draw the heat out of the ceiling, uh, being that the drop ceiling inside is, is rather low. It keeps it warm in that building all the time, even, even with the new air conditioning in it.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Louis, I hope that answered, but, oh.
Do we have a, will we bid that out, when we're getting ready to actually do the work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where, where do we come up with the thirty-nine thousand, is that just an estimate? What does it cost?
I had three contractors come out and give me, uh, quotes.
Okay.
So we took them off of that, off, that number off those quotes.
Okay, then we'll actually bid it out when we get ready.
Yes, we'll bid it out once we get ready.
Okay. Ms. White, will that go through your office to the city? Yes, thank you, okay, okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, a second.
Second.
A second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you today is for the R T P grant, which you approved sometime last year. This grant has now been received, its minimum is the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The city will be required a match of twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand coming from the R T P.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second, second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, the third one, you actually need to do two votes on, because I'd asked that it be a gen, uh, added to the agenda. We have received the ACT grant, first we need to vote on the acceptance of the grant, which has not been done. This grant is the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, and if you'll accept the grant, then we'll do the budget amendment.
Move the acceptance of the grant.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, the budget amendment is in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, no match for the city, and this is an additional about three thousand more dollars than what they received last year. This will cover overtime salaries for the ACT grant.
Move for approval.
A motion.
Second.
A second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bell. Final item on the agenda, invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.